Oh, there you're muted, I think.
All right.
There, Gary.
Yep, you hear me now?
Yep, yep. We actually could hear you on the phone, so I wanted you to mute your.
Yep.
Your screen.
Who do we, who do we have here now?
So far, we've got me and Ken and Robin Cochran, who I don't know.
Is that part of the consulting team?
Um, I don't know if that's Tracy or not. Did you get done with the exec session?
Yeah.
Great.
Greg, what do you look like at 10:00 tomorrow morning for a meeting with the people on?
Um, at 10:00? Let me check my calendar real quick. I've got a conflict. I've got a meeting on Carefree Recharge. Discussion on recharge with the CAP folks.
Okay, we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Tony.
Hey, Greg.
How are you?
Good. I heard you say something about recharge with CAP. Are they coming around on your plan?
Well, I don't know. This will be our first meeting.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call this joint meeting of the Board of Directors of the Town of Carefree, Arizona Utilities Community Facilities District and the Board of Directors of the Carefree Water Company to order a roll call. Candace, I believe we have everyone with the exception of Stephen Hatcher and Vin right now. We also have three outside guests from three additional areas, Cohen Van Lou, Akin Gardner, as well as Sherman and Howard, Mr. Michael Wright. Item number one. Moving along here so we don't run into the council meeting later. Approval of the UCFD CWC meeting minutes for December 1st, 2020, 2021, which are attached to the documents which were sent out. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve those.
I move we approve the minutes.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Candace, would you please go down the roll call?
Sure. Um, uh, Board Member Craig?
Hi.
Board Member Croyer?
Here? Are we, are we voting or?
Yes.
Aye, thank you.
With Board Member Diolicio?
I apologize, I was late.
Okay, did you hear the motion?
I did not.
Made to approve the UCFD CWC meeting minutes for December 1st, 2020.
Yes, I approve, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Vice Chair Crane?
Aye.
And Chair Peterson?
Yes, and Tony Geiger?
Uh, I'm sorry about that. Um, Board Member Geiger, I apologize.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Candace, did you see that Stephen Hatcher is, is around, but he's having trouble connecting?
Yeah, I reset him, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, that, item number one passes. Item number two, Greg, I believe we're holding on this at this point in time, the February 9th meeting minutes?
Yes, I haven't had a chance to review those, so if we can delay those till the next meeting, that would be great.
Fine, we'll, we'll come back to those at a future meeting. Item number 3A. Review discussion and possible action to approve Resolution 2021-02, authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Directors to enter into a construction manager at risk, paren, CMAR, closed paren, pre-construction services contract with Akin Gardner Construction LLC. Greg, would you like to talk about this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary, can you give me control of the screen? Or can I do that automatically?
You should be able to do it right now. Try, try to do the screen share.
Say host disabled participant screen sharing, so I think you need to do something.
Try now.
There we go.
All right.
Right, thank you. Pull my screen up. All right, can everybody see my screen with the Carefree logo on the top of it?
Yes.
Great. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening and thank you. This presentation will cover two agenda items, agenda item numbers 3A and 3B. And both of those agenda items do support and are related to the Carefree Water Consolidation Project. With agenda item number 3A covering a contract for a construction manager at risk for this project, and an agenda item number 3B covering a final design and engineering contract for this project. By way of introductions, and I think the mayor already has introduced these, these folks, but just wanted to do it again, we do have representatives from both of the firms covered under these contracts with us tonight. We have with us Ken Kawamoto, who's with the firm of Akin Gardner. He's our recommended construction manager at risk for the project. And we also have with us Tracy Grundon, who's with the firm of Cohen Van Lou Engineers, who is, will be the contractor, recommended contractor for the final design of this project. So welcome to both of those two representatives. Just to kind of refresh your memory on nomenclature and terminology for this, this project. This is again, a map, an overall map of the Town of Carefree town limits. The area outlined in blue on this map is the water service area for the Carefree Water Company. The area that's cross-hatched in red on the western side of the Town of Carefree is what we call the Carefree Service Area. And that's the area within the Town of Carefree that serves potable water by the Town of Cave Creek. Yeah, and it is shown highlighted by these three ovals. You can see that there are three very geographically distinct areas or regions that make up the Carefree Service Area, so we can talk about those independently. We have given those areas identifiers. With the oval on the lower left-hand portion of the screen identified as Neighborhood A or Southwest Carefree. The oval in the middle of the three is Neighborhood B or West Carefree. And the oval in the middle upper part of the screen is Neighborhood C or Northwest Carefree. And again, these make up the entirety of the Carefree Service Area. Back on, about three weeks ago, on February 9th, we discussed that lengthy acquisition of the Carefree Service Area. And that would be the acquisition from a perspective of water service of neighborhoods A, oops, excuse me, of neighborhoods A, B, and C. And essentially disconnecting the Carefree Service Area from the Cave Creek Water and reconnecting the Carefree Service Area to the Carefree Water Company system. The project that we'll be implementing to do this transition of the Carefree Service Area over from Cave Creek Water to Carefree Waters is called the Carefree Water Consolidation Project, and that we'll be discussing that tonight. This graphic, we also, I also showed you at the February 9th meeting, three weeks ago, for the Carefree Water Consolidation Project. And it really just gives you an idea of the magnitude and the complexity of the water consolidation project that we're contemplating here. You can see it's a fairly busy slide, but there are a lot of boxes on this slide. And each one of those boxes represents an area where we're going to need to do some level of construction work to either disconnect the Carefree Service Area from the Cave Creek System, reconnect the Carefree Service Area to the Carefree Water Company System, or do both. And the complexity of the work in each one of these boxes really varies quite a bit. It can, can vary anywhere from being a small, simple pipeline cut and cap type project to, to probably the biggest complex part, most complex piece of this puzzle is the construction of a new 300,000 gallon water storage reservoir. So you can see that this project, again, is very widespread. It's focused and concentrated in the western part of Carefree, and it's very complex. This next graphic just shows you the neighborhood A, B, and C boundaries overlaying on, on top of the graphic to show you how the, the different features of the project are dispersed through the western part of Carefree. And the next graphic just shows you some of the more major features associated with the Carefree Water Consolidation Project. As we discussed at the February 9th meeting, Carefree Water Consolidation Project does offer us a lot of construction opportunities and a lot of construction challenges. It is a fairly large, complex project. The traditional method of building projects like this, which is a design bid build or low bid type process is not a good fit for this project. There's too many unknowns and too much coordination and sequencing that needs to be discussed and coordinated with the contractor. So we feel like the traditional DBB low bid method is not a good fit. So at the February 9th meeting, we did recommend an alternate delivery method. And that alternate delivery method that we recommended was a construction manager at risk process, which is sometimes abbreviated as the CMAR process. Now, this next graphic does show you kind of the differences between the two methods with the method, delivery method on the left being the traditional design bid build or low bid method. And under that delivery method, typically an owner, in this case, it'd be the Carefree Water Company and the Carefree UCFD hires an engineer. And the two of those, those groups and entities, the owner and the engineer, work together to develop essentially final design or 100% design plans. When that, when those are completed, the owner then essentially puts those design plans out on the street and requests that a construction, a construction contractor's bid on them, submit sealed bids to the owner, the owner opens up those bids and essentially then typically awards the construction of the project to the low bidder on, on the project. This is a good method where you have a very, what I call a very tight project, where you have tight plans, tight specifications, and you have fairly simple construction, fairly simple and standard type construction. And we don't have that for the Carefree Water Consolidation Project. The delivery method on the right is our recommended delivery method, which is a construction manager at risk method. Under this method, the owner, again, the Carefree Water Company, Carefree UCFD, very early on in the process, about at the 30% design level, forms a team to take that project through preliminary engineering, 30% plans, to final designs, who takes it through the 30, 60, 90, and then 100% design plans. Similar to the, the design bid build process, the owner hires an engineer to do the final engineering, or to do the engineering on the, the project. Different than the, the DBB or design bid build process is that early on in the process, you hire a, a construction contractor to be part of the team. And we see that providing really two major benefits to us as the owner. Having a contractor, construction contractor, early on in the process allows the construction contractor to give the design engineer and the owner input from a construction perspective and from a contractor perspective on the engineering of the project, on the design of the project. The second big benefit we see in hiring a, a construction contractor early on in the process is that the contractor then follows the project through 30, 60, 90, and 100% plan. So by the time you get to the 100% plan level, that contractor is very familiar with the project. They're very familiar with the requirements and all the challenges associated with the project. And when you get to that 100% level, they're at a point where they're ready to hit the ground running and implement construction. So we see a lot of benefits associated with the, the construction manager at risk process. What you'll be considering tonight as the board is really the implementation and forming of this team under the construction manager at risk process. And that would be hiring an engineer to produce final engineering plans and hiring a contractor, construction contractor, to give us construction type input into the process. The first contract you'll be considering is a final design and engineering services contract. We are recommending that that contract be with the engineering firm of Cohen Van Lou. Cohen Van Lou have been with us from the very beginning. They're our experts on neighborhoods A, B, and C. We originally hired Cohen Van Lou back in 2018 to do a water study to take a look and assess and evaluate the Carefree Service Area and neighborhoods A, B, and C from the perspective of potential acquisition. From there, it did move into the acquisition process, and we started arbitration, obviously. During that whole process, Cohen Van Lou did provide us arbitration assistance, and they did also provide expert witness testimony during the arbitration process. And then during this whole timeframe, Cohen Van Lou has been taking the Carefree Water Consolidation Project from preliminary planning all the way into preliminary engineering and where we're at today, which is 30% plans. Their contract is for, in a not to exceed amount of just under $600,000, $589,326, which does take us to a final 100% plans. And their contract is included in the board packet that was distributed to the board as Contract C 2021-02. The second contract you'll be considering tonight is to hire a construction manager at risk, or a CMAR, for pre-construction services. And we are recommending that we hire the construction contractor of Akin Gardner Construction as our CMAR for the project. This recommendation comes to you via a two-step qualifications-based selection process, which that first step was opening it up to all potential contractors to submit to us written statements of qualifications, SOQs. We did receive five SOQs from various contractors around the state. We did create a review panel to review those five SOQs. From that review panel process, we did narrow down or shortlist the group of contractors to two. And for those two contractors, we did oral interviews. And from that oral interview process, we came out with a recommendation to hire Akin Gardner as our construction manager at risk. Their contract is in a not to exceed amount of just under $400,000. The exact amount is $387,690 in their contract number, which was included in the board packet, is C 2021-01. Some of the services that Akin Gardner will be performing under this pre-construction services contract and, and things that we think really add value to this design effort. And one very important service they'll be providing is project scheduling, sequencing, and phasing, because we do have two operating water systems associated with this project, the Cave Creek Water System, the Carefree Water System, and then transitioning the Carefree Service Area off of Cave Creek and on to Carefree. Project scheduling, sequencing, and phasing is going to be an extremely important part of this project. Akin Gardner will also be providing project planning services from a construction perspective. They also will jump in immediately doing cost estimating on the project from a, starting at the 30% level to make sure our project is within budget, that we have enough contingencies in the project for the level that we're at. And that if we do go over our budget, how can we, what can we do to get, to trim the, the project so we can get it back into budget? Another item of work that Akin Gardner will be performing is, is value engineering. And typically, and they'll be looking, under value engineering, they're looking at ways to improve the value of what we'll be constructing in the project. And a lot of times, increasing the value of what we're doing also has a beneficial impact as far as cost. They'll also be looking at constructability of what we're, we're designing and making sure that what we're putting on paper makes sense from a construction perspective and that we're making it as easily constructible as possible. And again, that kind of relates back to, the easier it is to construct the project, the more cost effective the project is. And then finally, they'll be looking at, at long lead items, equipment that may take a long time to order and procure and to get delivered. And do we need to do any early procurement of those items so that those items don't hold up the implementation of the project? Ultimately, what the construction manager at risk will be responsible for is to giving us, as we, we progress to the, the 100% design stage, is giving us a maximum, a guaranteed maximum price on the project. And actually, we're not anticipating just one guaranteed maximum, guaranteed maximum price. We'll probably be getting at least four guaranteed maximum prices. We are expecting this, this project to, or the pipeline part of the project to be broken into at least two contracts with two GMPs. We are expecting a GMP for the booster pump station part of the project and a GMP for the water storage reservoir portion of the project. And this is being done just so that we can get a logical sequence of construction and to get started on the things early on that we can, and then follow that up with other items that can, can follow the early on construction lead items. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions that the board might have. And we can also put a, a possible motion on the screen.
Greg, can you hear me? Steve Hatcher here.
I can, Steve.
Okay, because I have my, for whatever reason, the Zoom thing's not working with my computer, so I'm using my phone. In your last slide, do we build the water tank that we discussed the previous few weeks ago? And yeah, thank you, the water tank and a couple of pipelines and so forth prior to the major initiative in the integrating of the, of the piping systems? And my second question was, just out of curiosity, what is the difference between sequencing and phasing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that, those are obviously discussions that as we enter into these contracts, we're going to have. There may be some logic in going ahead and building a, the water storage reservoir early. And there's no reason why you couldn't get it built and constructed and essentially have it sit and ready to be put into service when all the pipeline work and interconnections are ready to be done. That's something that we'll, we'll want to address as we get the engineer and the contractor on board. There's obviously some, a, a lot of work that needs to be done to design the water storage reservoir, to acquire the property and to get it constructed. But yes, that could be something that, that could be done early on. And if it's done early and sits there waiting to be connected because of some of the pipeline work, that still, still works from a, a construction sequencing and phasing perspective.
Yeah, I was just, just curious what, how, how it goes. I'm not implying anything. I'm just curious, that's all.
Yeah, the, the discussion between phasing and sequencing, there's, there's probably a kind of a, a fine line and differentiation between sequencing and phasing. Phasing you may think of as more of a big picture. How do you, a big picture, how do you phase the, the, the work in the project? How do you phase the pipeline contracts? What bigger picture ways do you have of dividing up the contract? Sequencing might be more getting down to the construction level of what pipeline do you, do you construct first? What, what pipeline do you disconnect first? What pipeline do you turn off first? And then what pipeline do you open up? So sequencing may be getting more down into the details of how do you, how do you get the free service area turned off of Cave Creek and turned back on to, to Carefree Water?
Thank you.
Are there any further questions, recognizing we're starting to run a little bit into the past, our appointed time here?
Yeah, I got one quick question, Greg. I noticed in the contract documents for Akin Gardner, it talks about pre-construction services through January of 2022. Do we anticipate their portion taking that long? Or do we think we'll have all this stuff, the design, you know, final GMPs and all done prior to that date?
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we really are setting our sights off to, to front-load this and get things done earlier rather than later. You know, that, you know, that year deadline really is that there could be things going on related to pre-construction services that kind of lag and go into that timeframe. But we're hoping not. We're hoping most of it's front-loaded and we can get a lot of this stuff done through the, the 2021 timeframe and not have to roll into 2022. But if there are some services that roll into 2022, then we have that flexibility under the contract.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion points? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve, and I think we should do these separately as opposed to on a combined basis. Move to approve Resolution 2102, authorizing the Chairman into Contract 2021-01 with Akin Gardner Construction. And I'm, I'm looking at Gary here. We can approve both of these at the same time?
Greg, I think you want two separate motions for each contract, correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is covered under one resolution, Resolution 2021-02. I would defer to Mike Wright. I, I would assume we could do this under one motion to approve.
Yeah, you are correct, yes. So a motion to approve Resolution 2102 is what the motion is.
Authorizes both 21, 2021-01 and 2021-02 with Cohen Van Lou. And before anyone says that, there's one, we are going to make one typographical edit on page two of the Cohen Lou contract where we're going to make some changes. It does not change the meaning, but we're just going to correct it and edit it. So with that, I would request.
Make a motion.
I will make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-02. Candace, would you please poll all of the directors, please?
Board Member Vince Diolicio?
Aye.
Thank you. Board Member Hatcher, did you make it?
Yes, ma'am.
There we go. How do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Cheryl Croyer?
Aye.
Board Member Geiger?
Aye.
Board Member Craig?
Aye.
Vice Chair Crane?
Aye.
And Chairman Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
So 2021-02 passes with a unanimous vote. I believe we're moving on to item number four, which is adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And seconded, all those in favor can please just say aye. And then I believe.
Aye.
Number, don't leave your Zoom number, and we'll switch over into the Carefree Town Council meeting.
Right. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg.
Greg, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. Like to call to order this notice of the regular meeting of the Carefree Town Council. Candace, I believe you have a roll call of everyone. Pledge allegiance. Vince, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands.
Thank you. Rearranging of the sequencing on our schedule tonight to accommodate some schedules. So let me quickly go through the consent agenda first. We're going to pull item number one and put that on a future date. We're going to go through items number two through six. Item number two, acceptance into the public record of the January 2021 paid bills. Item three, acceptance into the public record of the February 2021 paid bills. Item four, acceptance of the cash receipts and dispersments report for December 2020. Item five, acceptance of the cash receipts and dispersments report for January of 2021. Item six, approval of the IGA extending animal control services through June 30th, 2020. Are there any questions or comments from any of the council members relative to items two through six? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve items two through six.
I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's, yes.
Okay, Candace, would you please poll the directors or the council members?
Council member Geiger.
Aye.
Council member Coyer.
Aye.
Council member Hatcher.
Aye.
Council member DiAlicio.
Aye.
Council member Cray.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crane.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Thank you. Items two through six are passed. Next, we're going to pull forward item number 10. Review, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2021 dash oh two. And proclamation regarding the renaming of the Sundial Plaza to the Gary Jones Plaza and recognition of the installation of a plaque installed honoring Gary Jones. If I might ask Councilman DiAlicio to please read this proclamation.
Will do. Thank you. And thank you for accommodating me tonight, uh, and getting you going earlier. And I don't know if, uh, Gary and Leslie Jones are, are on our call tonight. They were try, going to try to log in. So hopefully they are. Uh, and this is something that, that it comes long overdue as Mr. Jones is, is one of, is the last remaining founder of our town. Uh, and, uh, and, and we, uh, we're looking for a fitting, uh, tribute to him. Uh, and, and we found one in this proclamation. So I will read the proclamation now. Whereas the town of Carefree is a community which acknowledges that the history and contributions of Gary Jones as a pioneer and visionary in the early development of the town of Carefree, and whereas the town of Carefree is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal involvement and participation in the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their family, friends and community. And whereas the town of Carefree is a community which chooses to shine a light and on and celebrate individuals like Gary Jones within its community, who was the early pioneer and laid, laid the early land development planning, built the first home in 1959, as well as over 300 more homes over the course of his 68-year career with their unique architectural designs that celebrate the beauty of the Sonoran Desert and made the Carefree lifestyle one in which is in harmony with the beautiful outdoors, working hard to preserve our desert by not disturbing the environment over moving earth in order to accommodate conventional construction. Whereas the town of Carefree acknowledges Gary Jones and is proud to support Gary Jones Day commemorating the date of the dedication of the Gary Jones Sundial Plaza. And now therefore, I, Vince DiAlicio, on behalf of Les Peterson, mayor of the town of Carefree, and on behalf of all residents of Carefree, do hereby proclaim March 6th, 2021 to be Gary Jones Day with all of the honors and incentives which this proclamation incurs in honor of all of his contributions of, to the Carefree community from his arrival with real estate developers KT Palmer and Tom Darlington on a handshake agreement to this desert oasis in 1952, to his influence as a master builder, architect and developer still today. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Carefree to be affixed at Carefree Town Hall this second day of March in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Vince. Indeed an honor and, and we are pleased to honor Gary Jones. Vince, I would take a motion to approve this that we can put before the council.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proclamation in honor of Gary Jones and Gary Jones Day on March 2nd, uh, excuse me, for March 6th, 2021. And in renaming the Sundial Plaza, the Gary Jones Sundial Plaza.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask Candace, who is on to, we'll, we'll go through and poll the, uh, council members on this. Cheryl, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Tony.
Aye.
Michael. Michael Cray, how do you vote?
You're muted.
Hold your hand up if you vote yes.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was muted. Aye. I apologize. Aye.
Michael votes yes. Vince, how do you vote?
I vote yes. Aye.
Stephen.
I vote yes.
John.
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you to Gary Jones for all he's done. Vince, thank you for championing this before the council.
And thank you all. I'm honored and appreciative.
Thank you. We'd like to do one more of a similar nature. Uh, item number, uh, seven, which is shown approval of a proclamation supporting AT&amp;T Services veterans in the Carefree and, and entire Sun, um, the foothills area. And I'd like to ask John here, and following that, we will do call to the public and current events.
Just to, uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, just to summarize a proclamation for AT&amp;T veterans. Uh, this proclamation is, is meant to acknowledge the work they've done for veterans in Carefree. They've, they've run a, a charity Veterans Day run two years in a row. Uh, they've been, they were very helpful in, in organizing, um, the website and coordinating the financial effort behind the Veterans Memorial. And they do a lot of things to help veterans here in our community, uh, above and beyond that. Uh, AT&amp;T Veterans is dependent upon funding from AT&amp;T to, to run their organization. And, uh, we want to acknowledge all the work that AT&amp;T veterans have done for us. And to, uh, to let the, the folks at AT&amp;T who are funding them to know how much we appreciate it and to encourage those folks at AT&amp;T to continue helping the AT&amp;T veterans.
Okay, thank you, John. I'm looking for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Well, I move that we approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Candace, would you please poll the, uh, council members?
Yes, council member Geiger.
Aye.
Council member Coyer.
Aye.
Council member Hatcher.
Aye.
Council member DiAlicio.
Aye.
Council member Cray.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crane.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to call to the public, we would ask people to, uh, a couple of things. Number one, limit their comments to three minutes. And we've requested that they submit them in writing as well, half-page, 12-point type, uh, so that, uh, we may read them. Uh, and that recognize that the council doesn't make decisions on call to the public, uh, but it's for input. And I have three here and Candace, I don't know if you've received any further. And let me read the first two and then we'll, we'll solicit, uh, comments from the audience. The first one is from a Sarah Gondel. And she says, I would like to respectfully request that the Carefree Town Council introduce a change to the town of Carefree zoning ordinance to clarify and in order to promote community unity. It is not clear why political signs must be removed after an election, but political flags and banners can remain at any time. Therefore, I would like to request that section 8.06 be revised as follows with edits in bold. No, non-commercial, non-political flags, dot, dot, dot. Number two, one temporary political sign in caps, flag or banner per lot per candidate. Sarah Gondel. I will pass this on. Uh, we, we thank Sarah. Okay. And let me read the second one, and, and I will also read the third one, uh, following that. Public comment comes from Andrea Winters and Gary Kelsey, who live at 37,000 North Dream Street in Carefree. Carefree Town Council comment text. This letter is concerning a Carefree parking violation 7-3-D notice that was posted on our house on February 23rd, 2021. My husband and I have lived in Carefree for 18 years. We recently purchased a new travel trailer and parked it in front of our residence for a few days while we loaded it. Familiarized ourselves with this operation, checked out its system to verify it was working and then left on a 12-day trip. On our return, we parked it for approximately 36 hours to unload it and prepare it for storage. We put it in storage on February 20th. I have spoken with the code enforcement officer and been told that the specific violation involved parking on a street between midnight and 5:00 AM and that it was reported to his office by one of our neighbors. My husband and I believe that relying on unverified complaints from people with unknown motivations is not an equitable way to enforce violations. Beyond that, we think that there should be a way for people who live in Carefree and cannot store their air, their RVs on their property to temporarily park overnight if necessary on the street while loading and unloading. A temporary overnight parking permit system for residents of Carefree would seem to be a workable solution. Due to COVID and the resulting explosion in use of RVs, we were unable to find suitable storage anywhere within a 40-mile radius and are storing our RV in Wickenberg. It's just not practical to tow our trailer there and back in order to comply with the overnight restrictions. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. I'd like to thank you. We'll pass it on and, and give that due consideration. The third one is from, uh, Mr. Ken Roberts, who has written to us, and let me explain this a little bit, um, because we have a, a series of, of correspondences here. In essence, at the top, at one of the peaks of Black Mountain is a flag constructed by some unknown party or parties, which has been up there occasionally over the last number of years. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down. Mr. Roberts is a scout master for a, a Boy Scout troop in Cave Creek, and they would like to put, uh, solar lighting at the base of the flag and, and light it up. Now, this, this raises a number of things. The first thing is whose land is it? Because we only accept application from landowners. The preliminary investigations have identified that this belongs to Maricopa County and that it's listed by them as a preserve. So the first step that anyone would take before coming to the council for approval or even consideration of lights on it is to have it approved, the, go to the owner of the property, request their agreement, and, and then if they're in agreement, if you wish to submit that the town council, uh, come through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's the third one. Is there no further on call to the public? The next one is current events. Item number nine, and I would like to announce that the formation of the Carefree Resident Safety Advisory Committee. We have been, uh, conducting a series of advertisements and communications over the last three weeks, soliciting participation in this committee. We have had nearly a dozen responses to it. There have been some excellent, excellent people who have thrown their hats in the ring. Uh, if there are any others out there who would like to participate, uh, please get in contact with the town, uh, offices. And before we close that out and, and make the, uh, appointments to that committee. This will deal with, uh, the safety esch, aspects of what we are doing here in Carefree, which is uh, fire coverage. It will deal with ambulance service. It will also deal with police service. And this will be something of very, very long-lasting impact upon the town. Do any of the other, uh, council members have anything to announce during call to the public? Vince?
I do. And I apologize. I should have said this before. Saturday morning, uh, March 6th is Gary Jones Day and from, uh, at 10:00 AM, there'll be a dedication of the boulder that, uh, Mr. Jones selected from his property and had, uh, placed, uh, next to the sundial, uh, along with the plaque, uh, that, uh, the Cave Creek Museum, uh, has, uh, has dedicated, uh, to Mr. Jones, and that will be unveiled Saturday morning at 10:00. Uh, there, there will be some commentary from Mr. Jones and, and Leslie Jones, Mrs. Jones as well. Uh, from 9:00 to 10:00, the Varsity Sports Show will be doing their broadcast from there and Mayor Les Peterson and Vice Mayor John Crane will be, uh, will be on hand to provide some commentary and interviews on the show as well. So I just wanted to let everyone know. It will be live streamed, so, uh, AM 1060, and, uh, uh, you can, if you can't make it out in person, the town will be live streaming the event as well. So thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor in advance.
Okay, thank you. Any of the other, uh, council members have any announcements?
Yeah, I have one announcement. Alex Orozco, our communications coordinator, is working with an organization called Central Arizona Conservation Alliance to put together a program in the pavilion on March 18th, dealing with, uh, the removal and control of invasive species and a wildfire control. So Chief Kratz will be there and, uh, the program will be in the afternoon, I think at 5:30. So she'll publish more information about this as the date approaches and coins and social media. But I'd watch out for that because it's really good information that can help protect, protect ourselves and protect our neighbors. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'd like to go on to the next item, but what I'd like to do is to pull the last item up and, and advance it forward, uh, because we have a number of people from our, our very worthy, Unified School District which are here, and these have been singled out on the Carefree CARES program as having made particular contributions so that, I, I know they found, uh, find a lot of these subjects to be immensely fascinating and informative, but we may do them early and they can use their own volition if they'd like to stay for the balance of the meeting. So I'd like to pull forward item number 13. Presentation of the Carefree CARES CCUSD Excellence Award in conjunction with Cave Creek Unified School District honoring a teacher or staff member from each school in the district. Each, uh, we, we do two of these each year. So I'd like.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
I, I apologize for interrupting my, my wife has been in, in contact with our superintendent and he's been uh, telling her that they are not able to get on the Zoom meeting call. If you're expecting them to be on.
I'm, I'm not expecting them for this portion to be on.
Oh, okay.
But I, I would very much like them to be on, but um, you know, we're looking at ourselves puzzled because there's a large number of other people who have gotten on. puzzled, because there's a large number of other people who have gotten on using this-
I understand. I just-
They can call in as well.
Please, please extend our apologies to them. I'd like to turn this over to Councilwoman Cheryl Croyer, who will lead us through this aspect.
We just, and by the way, guys, sorry, we just got a chat message from Mr. Dolezal at the middle school. He said they were able to get on with a different ID, so they're on.
Oh, good, okay.
Welcome all those of you from CCUSD.
Candace, do we have the presentation slides?
Trying to get there.
Gary's trying to put them up right now.
All right, well, I'll just start. The town of Carefree has the great honor to recognize one outstanding Cave Creek Unified School District staff member from each school or department. This great privilege occurs quarterly during the school year. Each award-winning recipient will receive a special Carefree Cares pin. CCUSD will also recognize the winners at an upcoming monthly governing board meeting. And additionally, each teacher will receive a $50 gift card from the town's notaries. Each year, they pool all of the notary funds received and donate them to a worthy cause. This year, those fees will be distributed to each recognized teacher through the Carefree Cares Program. The criteria for selection is volunteer substantial time and expertise to CCUSD, the school, and/or the community, is a positive role model for students, staff, and community, serves as an inspiration to others, always represent CCUSD and the community in a positive and professional manner. Selections are submitted by the principals and directors at each site. Our first awardee this evening is Ms. Sky Cooper. She is a special education teacher from Desert Willow Elementary School. Ms. Cooper works in Desert Willow Elementary School in our K through 4 resource room and is vital to our school community. This year, she started the year with very little flexibility in her schedule and still found a creative way to build a schedule to meet the various needs of students in many different classrooms that keeps them physically distant and engaged in their learning. She has mentored several different paraeducators to create a classroom that is warm and welcoming, and students are thriving. Sky has also stepped up to help out when we are short on substitutes, filling in and teaching music, covering lunches, and helping out wherever else she can. Through all of this, her teachers, her students have continued to thrive and grow. This was submitted by Stacy Weiss, the principal of Desert Willow Elementary School. Congratulations, Sky. Our next awardee is Mrs. Lori DeCiso. I hope I pronounced that correctly. She's the Youth Transition Program from Cactus Shadows High School. She was nominated for this award by Tony Vining, the principal at CSHS. Lori is the glue that holds the Special Education Department together. She is doing the duties that would be done in normal circumstances by three other people. She supports all of the Cactus Shadows Special Education teachers and support staff, helping in the classroom with IEP compliance, setting up services, and any other of a number of items to ensure the special education students receive the best possible service. What is also amazing is she does all of this with a smile and a positive attitude. In such an emotionally draining time, she is constantly pumping people up and finding solutions to never-before-seen circumstances. Cactus Shadows is lucky to have such an amazing person working with our students and staff. I am proud to recommend her for this honor. Congratulations, Lori. Our next awardee is Mrs. Elisa Gould. She's a reading teacher from Horseshoe Trail Elementary School, and she was nominated by Erin Pedanato, the principal. Elisa Gould, through her leadership and service, has been indispensable this year for our Horseshoe Trail students, staff, and larger school community. Over the summer and into the fall, she supported teachers with their Canvas pages, providing outstanding professional development that aided our efforts greatly in providing dynamic learning opportunities for students. Once we transitioned to in-person learning, she covered classrooms for ill and quarantined staff members for what seemed like weeks on end. Additionally, she designed and posted inspirational quotes in our teacher lounge to boost staff morale, completed walkthrough observations with some of our first-year stallion teachers as an instructional coach and as a valued member of our leadership team. She attends monthly meetings that offer critical feedback to administration. Every single thing just listed is not even part of her job description as a reading specialist. Simply put, Elisa Gould goes above and beyond for the HTES community and consistently places the needs of others before her own. Every school needs an Elisa Gould. Congratulations. The next awardee is Mrs. Kelly Hale. She's a fifth-grade teacher from Lone Mountain Elementary School, and she was nominated by Dr. Patty Johnson, the principal. Kelly Hale lives by the mantra that Frank Seraphini once said, "There is no such thing as a child who hates to read. There are only children who have not found the right book." Mrs. Hale teaches fifth-grade English Language Arts and inspires students to love reading and to love learning. She always knows how to get just the right book into a student's hands. She models for them what it means to learn and to grow, and blows up their beliefs about rankings and competition. Mrs. Hale also has also started her very own Cake Kids Club through Kiwanis at Lone Mountain, and is helping students to take ownership of improving our community through their service. Thank you for being an inspiration to us all, Mrs. Hale. Our next awardee is Ms. Lori Johnston. She's a reading teacher from Desert Sun Academy, and she was nominated by Erin Bagwell, the principal. Lori defines the word teammate. While not only a great teacher and interventionist, Lori builds great relationships with both the students and adults she works with. This year especially, whenever a need arises, we can count on her, and she always responds with a smile and willingness to do any task needed. Her smile is infectious, and one cannot pass by her without sharing a smile of their own. She is thoughtful, kind, and an extremely special member of our staff. Thank you, Lori, for not only being a great teacher, but for being an amazing human being as well. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Mrs. Annette McQuain. She's the Health Clinic Assistant from Snore and Trails Middle School. And I don't have who nominated her, but someone did, probably the principal. Annette exemplifies what it means to be dedicated to your school and your students. As our nurse's assistant during our current pandemic, she guides staff, families, and students to increase their awareness of and maneuver through COVID-19. To say that her job is different and more difficult than ever would be to underestimate, would be the understatement of the decade. She has put into practice effective tracking systems and answers the concerns of staff and parents with intelligence and grace. Often, she bears the brunt of the frustration parents have when their child needs to quarantine. She never loses her cool and has maintained a warm and welcoming environment in our nurse's office. After all, there is still plenty to do outside of COVID as our school nurse. Congratulations. And last, but not least, is Mrs. Antonella Netman. She's the fourth-grade teacher from Black Mountain Elementary School and was nominated by Matt Owlesley, the principal. Antonella Netman deserves to be recognized as a true team player and someone who is always looking out for others. In addition to being a great teammate and wonderful teacher, Antonella was a great influence outside of her classroom walls. Antonella has been a member of the Black Mountain family for more than 22 years and has always been a part of BMES leadership groups and committees that help lead our school forward. For the past 10 years, Antonella has spent nights, weekends, and multiple summers on research, program implementation, and both short and long-term strategic planning. As a certified administrator, she has also filled in for the principal on different occasions. During those times, her organized, calm, and caring nature has been on full display. Our staff and students are in great hands, no matter what role Antonella Netman is in. It is easy to say that our school and our community is better with such a wonderful person in it. Congratulations to all of the honorees, and we thank you for all the work you do.
Very nice, Cheryl. Yes, that was excellent, and these teachers and other workers within the school district, this has become one of the highlights of our town council meetings, just seeing the people that are doing such an outstanding job. It will be my privilege to attend the governing board meeting this coming Monday night, and I look forward, hopefully, to meeting each one of you in person. So thank you all, and please accept the deep gratitude of all of Carefree for the outstanding work you're doing with our youth. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is shown as item 11 on our agenda going in, presentation by Robin Cochrane, the new executive director of the Foothills Caring Corps regarding the past, present, and future services to the Foothills community of the Caring Corps. So I think Gary is tuning up, I believe.
Robin's there.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Okay, I'm gonna make an attempt to share a presentation here. Do you see it?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
So did you click Share Screen on the bottom, that green button?
Working on it.
Okay, there we go.
Yay!
Now you're cooking with gas.
Amazing.
Thank you Wi-Fi for working, I appreciate y'all. I want to start, do you see it? Can you see me and the slide or just the slide?
Both.
Okay, well, good. All right, I'm double trouble tonight. So I want to start by thanking you, and I'm so excited and I'm deeply honored to have the opportunity to introduce myself, and I want to thank you for your service to this wonderful community. Thank you for your loyal partnership. I've learned since I've been here in July, just what a great supporter you have been to the needs of our neighbors regarding your transportation grants and our partnership to serve the transportation needs and the growing and changing needs of our Carefree and Foothills neighbors. So thank you, thank you for making this such a special community to live, and thank you for giving me your time tonight to give you an update on the Caring Corps. So I've been here since July, and I want to say that I'm still learning, as in I'm learning how to click Next on this screen. Well... Bear with me. It's not progressing, I'm not giving up. Well, I guess I'm just gonna give up on my share, because it's not cooperating, I'm not progressing my photos. I'm gonna give it one more time, and then I'm just gonna talk as quickly as I can and honor your time, and I appreciate you working with me on my technology challenge here, because it was progressing earlier. Okay, well, I'm deeply sorry for that, because I had some beautiful pictures of my team that I wanted to show you, because when it all boils down to it, I'm just here to be a servant to this community and lead the Caring Corps. So I'm giving up on that, sorry. So I'm gonna show you here a picture of my team, because they are the heart and soul. This is the team, and this is the slide that I'm sharing. So I'm gonna start by letting you know that all this work is done through this wonderful staff, and we're now called the FCC Team. We've been doing a lot of team building since I've started, and I want to thank the team. And I want to thank the wonderful volunteers of this community. We have over 400 volunteers who help us, and we carry out our mission solely through this force of volunteers. I know that you wanted me to give you a little history. We are in our 21st year of operation, and our mission is paraphrased to provide non-medical services to older adults and individuals with disabling conditions to help them remain living independently in their homes so that they can successfully age in place. So I know that this started a long time ago with a few big-hearted residents of this amazing community, and it has grown remarkably. And we can only accomplish this through the wonderful partners like you, the town of Carefree and Cave Creek, and through our wonderful force of volunteers and the team. We call the people that we serve our neighbors, and we serve areas of this wonderful town of Carefree, Cave Creek, North Scottsdale, and North Phoenix. The history has included providing non-medical services to facilitate transportation, as you've been our loyal partner, and socialization. Many of our neighbors are aging in place or with their disabling conditions, they're isolated. So we are constantly looking and have a long history of serving the needs to address social isolation, and we don't want anyone in our, any of our neighbors to ever be lonely. And we also want to make sure that their nutritional needs are met. We've had a mobile meals program for many years. In fact, that program has increased by 60% since the onset of the pandemic. So that need has really increased in our community, and we also are concerned about everyone's safety and well-being, and we conduct wellness checks as a duty as part of our mobile meals program. So that's the history, it's a rich history. I have big shoes to fill, and the mission to serve our over 400 neighbors with our over 400 volunteers is just incredible. And I have just, I'm so grateful to have this opportunity. So at present, you know, we, since I started, everything has changed with COVID. We had to reduce a lot of our social activities. We're not taking anyone out in big group outings, and we're not going into people's homes for the friendly visits. But instead, we, to meet the challenges of COVID, we've developed many safety protocols to keep the team safe, to keep our neighbors safe, and to keep our volunteers safe. So that has been an ongoing and developing, safety first has been our priority. So right now, with the COVID still being a serious obstacle to how we traditionally carried out our services, we really have tried to pivot and understand what are the current needs. So we have continued with safety protocols, essential medical transportation trips, dialysis, chemo, radiation, macular degeneration. We have also been working with Maricopa County, and we have been- Maricopa County and we have been helping our neighbors access the vaccination and we've also been providing medical transportation for that. We have addressed the socialization issue and we've come up with these different recreational band programs. Our latest one was the Cupid Convoy and we had a really good time going out and sharing candies and treats and the other community members have stepped up in the Kiwanis and the food bank. We partnered to make sure that we go out and have fun with them with these, put on our outfits and our signs and have really enjoyed doing socialization in a different way. We continue to try to be creative and we're not doing in-person socialization, but we're doing friendly phone calling as well, as far as one-on-one accountability and reassessment of all our neighbors to make sure that we keep track of their ever-changing needs. Our mobility loan closet is growing and changing. We are being blessed by partnership with Desert Foothills Leadership Academy. We are moving forward with creating a new process for distributing the, to the public, which is open to the public, to define and have a safety, paperless, a touchless inventory. So we are implementing that and the wonderful people with Desert Foothills Leadership, including the youth at the Scottsdale Unified School District, thanks to our new superintendent. We are moving forward. They're also helping us with some of the technological issues related to this project. So we're very excited to launch a new and improved mobility loan closet and so that, that's a big initiative we're working on and it's been a great partnership with the Desert Foothills Leadership. The town of Carefree has, just cannot thank all of you enough for just letting me share with you tonight kind of where we're going because right now we have our six programs, but they certainly are limited. And so as a new leader, I have made it my priority to be strategic planning. So I think when you ask about the future, I think we're in a capacity building stage and as the COVID situation improves, you know, we're gonna continue to help with the vaccinations and continue to make sure that the critical needs of our neighbors are met. But it can't be done in a vacuum. So I, the future to me means connection, connection with the town, connection with all of you so that I can, I'm charged with responsibility of carrying out this mission, right? And I have to understand the needs of the community and I think you're the leaders and I want to hear what your needs are and we want to continue to grow and change and define those needs and have that connection and work with the community. And one of my priorities is to serve more with you and understand more and also I am very, very committed to the youth being involved and I'm so thankful to have had the opportunity to meet with our new superintendent and we are, I met with the school yesterday and we are really excited that we had 10 teenagers that came with our mobility loan closet project and it's just really exciting to connect the youth with our aging population and help our community grow together and really support each other. And it's, it's, it's an honor for me to share these few things with you. I can say that we also, as far as our future, I think that leveraging technology is essential and we did have a computer hack within 30 days of me starting. So we do have a lot of capacity building to do and that includes making sure that our IT infrastructure is built out properly. And I'm also working on a very strategic budget that is going to align with our clear defined goals for the next 18 months. So I want to listen and meet the needs of the community and work with you and be a good partner for you. We love our neighbors, we have a new care bear for all of our neighbors, we care about you, we love our neighbors. And again, I'm here today out of your generosity and I honor your time. I hope that what I've shared with you today helped a little bit. I have an open door policy and I hope that we can all have a one-on-one. I look forward to how we can get back and have some events and again, we're gonna utilize the transportation to meet the needs of the neighbors and I'm here to serve. So thank you for your time and thank you for your ongoing loyal, the grant has meant the world to us and thank you for your kindness and for your time and I hope y'all have a really successful meeting tonight.
Thank you, Robyn. That was outstanding.
Can I ask you a question?
A slide presentation being more thoughtful and enjoyable and communicative than you presenting in person and talking us through those things and showing us the bears. We love that. Over the years, the Caring Corps has been just an outstanding contributor throughout the entire Foothills and the town is thrilled and honored to be able to work with, with you and all of the other 400 volunteers. Anything else from the other council members?
May I ask Robin a question?
Sure, yes, yes.
Clarification if I may, the mobility loan closet, I assume are items walkers and so forth to facilitate, is, is that something, there's a need for additional items? That was my first question. And the second question was, from a financial standpoint, how do you stand for 2021?
Well, thank you for those two very insightful questions. I really, I'm thankful for that. The mobility loan closet is open to the public. It started with a partnership with Kiwanis and it has grown and grown and grown and we're researching constantly what the needs of are for the public for the mobility loan closet. We do take donations, that's how we obtain our inventory. We do need more wheelchairs, we need more transfer chairs. You know, there are certain items that we need more of and, you know, thankfully, we're meeting the needs of the public as best we can, but there are some critical items and equipment list that, particularly when it comes to the transfer chairs, they are cherished. So I think this new inventory system, this new touchless kiosk, it's gonna be magnificent. So I think it's gonna grow. As far as revenue, in the past, the Caring Corps relied upon the in-person events, the two big fundraisers. So I started in July, there'd been no Taste of Foothills canceled, no golf tournament canceled. So, you know, we had the, the, the big mask, no, you know, we had a, you know, the un-golf tournament fundraiser. So we, we've had to creatively fundraise and we are also developing a development strategy going forward that will look different. So I think that hopefully one day we'll be able to have some events. I'd like to have an appreciation event, a small gathering of all of you and thank you over at Keeler's. I know that, you know, he's such a wonderful citizen who's offered his venue and I would like to show appreciation to all of you and I think that we will in the future have some events for fundraising, but in the meantime, we're having to do more virtual fundraising. We do have a wonderful new team member, Bethany Moke. She's going to help us with our branding and our, she will help me build out this strategic plan for development. So we are definitely concerned about the revenue side, but I'm, I'm optimistic that we can fundraise and I do have one fundraising positive update. We have an one small angel computer cyber project donor and that we were approached, it's, it's a, it's a small amount, but it's a magnificent opportunity for us to develop a capital campaign to raise some money for our needs to leverage technology. So we are going to be developing that and we do have the $5,000 gift and then there's going to be a match. So we're, we're building out our first capital campaign and that'll be a big project and just appreciate your support. The grant funds just help us so much and we're gonna have to just continue to share our story, continue to meet the needs of our neighbors and then be very creative and strategic in our fundraising. So thank you for asking that important question.
Just one, one quick follow-up. Is, is there a list that you can share with us of the equipment you need for the mobility loan closet?
Of course, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you for, for, you know, being concerned and being willing to help us with that, absolutely. I will email you my failed PowerPoint presentation and I will also email you a list of our critical needs at the mobility loan closet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, thank you so much and I just want to say that I did much better at your virtual golf tournament this year than I did last year in the real tournament. So keep that virtual tournament going.
Thank you. I appreciate you all, all participating. The virtual no-play, big mask golf tournament, we made it happen and we were, because of generosity, we were able to raise some money. So thank you for participating in the no-play virtual golf tournament. But I think we're on the, on the schedule for this next year. So stay tuned. I think we will hopefully be able to have y'all out for a gratitude event, maybe this fall hopefully, and then we'll be able to do, have some fun at the golf tournament. But thank you all for your servant leadership and your visionary. This is just a tremendous community and I cannot tell you how deeply honored I am and thank y'all for listening and I hope that what I shared was helpful.
Thank you.
Here to help. Let me know how I can help you.
Thank you. Let's, let's stay in contact. We appreciate it, Robin.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 12. Review discussion and possible action to approve ordinance 2021-01 to amend the Carefree Town Code to protect the health, safety, and welfare by prohibiting the use, possession, sale, and smoking of marijuana on publicly owned or controlled property and only allow recreational marijuana sales within the medical marijuana facility holding a dual license. Public comments will be taken, but no samples will be given.
Oh, Gary, you're no fun.
Gary, we're, we're recording this now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the town council. As you're aware, last month I did the, a detailed presentation in this regard to this ordinance. This is the second reading. It is still an amendment to town code. Just in summary, it does prohibit smoking in public places of recreational marijuana or any kind of marijuana, really. Prohibits the use on town-owned properties or open space as well. So that's smoking or any type of use of marijuana. The ordinance does authorizing licensed medical facilities, dispensaries to operate as dual licenses, as the mayor explained. And lastly, it does establish some penalties. I think for the town of Carefree, it's just good for us to get ahead of this. I think we had a good discussion at the last meeting, some good questions raised by town council. And I think we all believe that we've created a good compromise for an ordinance that can change in the future if we see the need for it to. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Tonight, there is an action required by town council and what I did, I put that proposed motion up for whoever would like to make that motion following questions or discussions, either if we were denied the proposed ordinance. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think before we proceed, Candace, have we received any comments that have come into us? Having received no comments, I would take a motion to either approve or deny ordinance 2021-01 to allow for recreational marijuana sales within a medical marijuana facility that holds a dual license and prohibits use on any town-owned properties.
I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Candace, would you please poll the council members?
Right, yes. Councilmember Cray?
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Croyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Geiger?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher?
Aye.
I believe Councilmember Dielicio had to leave the meeting. So that would go Vice Mayor Cray?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion passes by a six to zero vote. Thank you. Item number 14. Review discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2021-03, authorizing the renewal of the town of Carefree's membership in the Rural Arizona Group Health Trust. Gary, would you take us through this, please?
Sure. Real briefly, you might recall about three years ago, we were struggling with our escalating insurance costs and went out to the private market and it presented insurance rates that were increasing approximately 20% per year for a small organization that we have. We had a hard time finding some insurance pools because they had minimum numbers or maximum, no, minimum numbers of employees and we didn't, did not qualify. We eventually came across Raggett, the Rural Arizona Group Health Trust, in which we qualified and we are actually the smallest member still three years later with this health trust. They actually have accepted six new members since we joined and it's a very stable trust. One of the three years, there actually was not an increase to the insurance rates. The second year, there was approximately a nine percent increase. This year, they're looking at a additional nine percent increase, but a lot better than, than what we were faced with in the past. And it gives us a sense of security, gives us a expectation that we will have consistent insurance rates for our employees and for the organization. We sit, I sit as a board member to this trust. So there's annual meetings in which we go over the, the census and the respective membership and we set the respective rates. So it's a very transparent process on an annual basis. Very confident that this is probably the best, best method for an organization of our size to get the most competitive rates out there. So very pleased with Raggett and the membership pool and how this has progressed for the town of Carefree. So with that being said, the resolution in front of you is to continue with our membership for another period of five years this, this time around. So five years would be the extension of our insurance.
Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Just one, Gary, are you, are you locked into this arrangement for five years?
Yes, yes, we would be locked in for five years, yes. Any further questions? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to authorize the renewal of the town's membership in the Rural Arizona Group Health Trust for the five-year period.
I make a motion.
Second?
Motion has been seconded. Candace, would you please poll the council members?
Yes. Councilmember Cray, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Approving resolution 2021-03 by a six-zero vote. Moving on to item number 15. Review, discussion, and possible action to approve for settlement and payment of the judgment in the Villa Fane matter. I would turn this over to our attorneys from the firm of Sherman and Howard for further discussion on this matter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, this item is on the agenda to discuss the situation with the Villa Fane dispute and to seek approval for the payment of the judgment that the Villa Fanes have obtained against the town. With that, I'd like to have my associate and partner, Tom Moore, who worked up and worked on this with me, outline the history of the matter briefly and then explain exactly where we are at this time.
Right. Thank you, Michael. So just to briefly go over where this dispute came from. It stems from the 20, from Carefree's 2019 Enchanted Pumpkin Garden Festival. Essentially, the town and the Villa Fanes, through their business Villa Fane Studios, had worked together to put on the Enchanted Pumpkin Garden Festival for about five years. And the 2019 festival was one of those. So the, the parties, Carefree and Villa Fane Studios, entered in to a contract in February 2019, the professional services contract, wherein the Villa Fanes and their company agreed to provide artistic services, pumpkin carving, displays, entertainment at the festival in exchange for money. Now, following that agreement, the Villa Fanes had been agitating to turn the event to a ticketed event wherein people would pay for admittance, whereas previously, they had gotten in for free and would just pay for certain aspects of the festival as a way of generating additional revenue with them taking a cut of the profits. Eventually, through negotiations, the town and the Villa Fanes came to a separate agreement called the transfer agreement, wherein ownership of the, the festival would transfer over a period of three years from Carefree to the Villa Fanes. And on top of that, the festival would become a ticketed event, and the Villa Fanes would take a profit off that. Well, eventually, the 2019 festival rolled around, and it was not as successful as everyone would have hoped. The fact that the event became ticketed became a sore spot for many people who would normally attend the event. Attendance was down pretty significantly, and the town ended up losing a fair bit of money on, on that, on that event. Now, following that, there were some disputes that arose between the parties. Carefree sued the Villa Fanes for the breach, a breach of the professional services contract on the basis that the Villa Fanes had essentially threatened to not follow through on their obligations under that contract unless the town agreed to these further terms by ticketing the event and giving them a cut of the profits, and also because they failed to clean up some stuff afterwards. The Villa Fanes cross-sued based upon the transfer agreement, which the parties had actually rescinded following the lack of success in the 2019 festival. Anyway, the, the parties proceeded to arbitration, wherein the arbitrator agreed with the Villa Fanes and not with the Town of Carefree, and granted them an award in their favor. When the Villa Fanes went to go confirm that arbitration award, we moved to vacate it on the basis that the arbitrator did not have the authority or the jurisdiction to hear any disputes concerning the professional services contract for a number of reasons. The trial court disagreed with us and entered a judgment in the Villa Fanes' favor in an amount that currently stands at $113,895.57. And that is where we currently stand.
Are there any questions from any of the council members? This is a very, how do I call it, discouraging. We feel that we were in the right. We fulfilled our obligations. The Villa Fanes, in our opinion, did not fulfill theirs. We, we felt that the arbitrator didn't comprehend the entire story and believed hearsay as opposed to written documents, which we produced. So now, we're, we're left with the decision of we can go on further legally, and this becomes both expensive and time-consuming, or we can pay the amount that is currently on the table, $113,000, and walk away from it. Is there any further discussion from any of the council members? Hearing none.
Mayor, I would just say, 100% agree with what you said.
Yeah.
I think the best course of action for the town now is to, to wrap this up and get it behind us and move on.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I also agree, John, and Les. You know, we have a lot of, I think, a lot of information, you know, written and, you know, town council meetings, you know, that we, we really believed, you know, supported our position versus the Villa Fanes. But, you know, we have an arbiter who's made a ruling, and we think it's an inaccurate ruling. And I think it's, you know, it is what it is. We've been, you know, dealt the cards, so I think it's time to, you know, it's time to move on and be done with it.
So Mayor, the action before the council tonight is the authorization of contingency funds of $113,895.13.
Is there a motion from anyone?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Candace, would you please poll the council members?
Councilmember Cray, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
I think she dropped off.
And Councilmember Dioliso has left the meeting. Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
By a majority of five to zero, we approve the payment and settlement of this claim with the Villa Fanes. Thank you all. Item number 16, adjournment. Would accept the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Everybody.